Good morning. I would like to call to order the business meeting, April 4th, 2019. And Administrator Bettman, will you please call the role?
Absolutely. First of all, I'd like to say that Chair Bernard and Commissioner Savis are out of the office, so Commissioner Fisher is serving as chair for the meeting today. I'd like to introduce Stephen Madcor, our county council, and Mary Rathke, clerk of the board. And I'll take the role. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
And Chair Fisher.
Here.
And may I wish you a very happy birthday.
Thank you. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Administrator Bettman, what do we have up first?
First of all, we have the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. So you're convening as the Housing Authority Board and...
Excellent. Thank you very much. Would you please read the consent agenda by title?
Yes. We have one item on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. It's approval of Resolution Number 1937, Housing Authority's Annual Plan 2019-2020.
Excellent. Would anyone like to remove this item from the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just want to make a comment. After reading all the way through that, I would want to thank staff for putting up with my questions and getting me answers to some of the questions that I had about the plan. So thank you very much for the efforts you folks put in. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
You have to convene as the Housing Authority? Did I forget that? Look at that. It's even in red.
So if you could do that, I don't need to read it again, but I think we need to take the motion one more time.
Let's withdraw the motion and the second, and we'll start over.
Okay. We would like, we need to convene as the Housing, as the Board of the Housing Authority. And I would like to introduce Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
Excellent. Now with that, I will entertain a motion if there aren't any objections to the consent agenda.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
And I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And now we can adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I believe we have a presentation for Child Abuse Prevention Month.
That's correct. And Rod Cook is going to give that presentation. He's here. Good morning, Rod.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Fisher. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Rodney Cook, and I am the Director of Children, Families and Community Connections Division of Health, Housing and Human Services. Today, we're here with five community partners to kick off April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I would like to invite the first two speakers up. Those speakers are Beth Kursons from Healthy Families of Clackamas County and Ian Friedrich from Family Stepping Stones Relief Nursery.
Good morning.
Good morning. So my name is Beth Kursons, and I am the Program Manager in Clackamas County for Healthy Families. And Healthy Families is an evidence-based child abuse prevention program that provides one-on-one parenting support to vulnerable families. About 89% of the program participants experienced some form of abuse or neglect in their own childhood. And they participate in Healthy Families because they really want to parent differently, but they lack the tools and the information to do that. And so that is really where Healthy Families can help. In partnership with Baby Link, WIC, and our local area hospitals, we reach out to families to offer them parenting information, resources, and support. During one-on-one home visits, highly-trained home visitors support parents in reading and responding to their infant's cues. They provide child development education and activities to strengthen the parent-child relationship. They provide postpartum depression and developmental screening. They connect families to needed community resources. They promote early literacy activities. And they partner with families to identify the values that are important to them and help them set goals with meaningful, achievable steps to build their confidence and foster success. Healthy Families believes that parents are their children's first and best teachers and really want to support them in helping to lay their child's foundation. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Ian. I'm with Family Stepping Stones, Children's Relief Nursery in Gladstone. We are a child abuse and neglect prevention program. Two of the main services that we provide are therapeutic classroom for kids ages two to five, and then we also do home visiting with families. Some of the things that we hope or attempt to teach the children in our classroom are things like social emotional intelligence, compassion, empathy, what it means to be a part of a community, sharing, problem-solving, fostering independence. We do this through play-based, open inquiry methodology. As far as our home visiting goes, we provide home visits to the kids who are in our classroom as well as, if our classrooms fill up, we provide home-based services to those families who aren't able to get into our classroom. During the home visits, we do, we meet families where they are through strengths-based practices. We deal with things like child development, connecting families to access or to resources in their community, and really just meet families where they are and learn a little bit about the barriers and the struggles that they might be facing so that they can be the best parent or caregiver that they can be. And that's, I think that's it.
Right. Thank you so much.
And next, we'll have Tom Soma from Children's Center and John Foote, District Attorney,
Good morning and happy birthday.
Thank you.
At my age, you don't celebrate those anymore.
Yeah, I'll be celebrating a little bit this afternoon with an event for the Children's Center about having conversations with difficult people. That won't be our discussion today, however.
Yeah, it's about having difficult conversations with our...
Difficult conversations.
With young children.
With young children. Thank you for clarifying.
I think the first way was better.
And we're bringing Maria from Sesame Street to head up that discussion, so...
Oh, good.
As Rod mentioned, I'm Tom Soma, Executive Director of Children's Center, where we're working to end child abuse and neglect through prevention, assessment, and treatment. I want to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to be here today. I also want to thank our closest partners in the county, Rich and Rod from H3S, Mary Rumbaugh, Adam Peterson, and the team at Behavioral Health, and Chelsea Hamilton and all the folks at the Early Learning Hub, with whom we work very, very closely. Max Planck is a theoretical physicist who won a Nobel Prize in the early 1900s. He said, "If you change the way you look at things, the things you look at change. If you change the way you look at things, the things you look at change." It pains me to have to call attention to Child Abuse Prevention Month each year, but at Children's Center, every day is an opportunity to prevent child abuse and to build a community where all children are safe, valued, and heard. Every day is an occasion to turn the tide, one child, one family at a time. And every day, as Max Planck observes, is an invitation for us to change the way we look at things so the things we look at change. Thank you for joining us, not only in changing the way we look at child abuse, but in the way we respond to it as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Foote. I'm the District Attorney here, but I have also been on the Board of the Children's Center since we started in 2001. And before that, in Mollum County, I ran the Sex Crimes and Personal Crimes Team in Portland and was around when we created CARES, the original medical facility for intervention. So I have a long professional connection to this issue. I also have a very personal connection to it. So I want to speak from the heart for a moment. Child abuse is one of the most tragic things that can happen to a child. It has lifelong effects on their health and on their emotions. It is hard to describe how significant that is. And even if we just put it in terms of money, how enormous that problem is, all the things that fall out from that. There's far more child abuse than we know about because it is always hidden. Last year, the Center saw over 400 kids. If that was measles in Clackamas County, we'd call it an epidemic. So I think this is one of the most fundamental duties as human beings that we have, and that is to protect our children. It is the duty of us as individuals, it's the duty of government, it's the duty of parents, schools, everyone. This is a difficult subject to look at because it's so hard, but we have to look at it because there can be much good that comes from the intervention. It is so inspiring to see how these kids respond. And the earlier the intervention is, the less damage there is. I encourage you all to read the, to watch the Leaving Neverland show on, special on Netflix about, from two victims' point of view, what happened to them and their experience with Michael Jackson. It's told from the victims' point of view. They are now adults, or they're in their 30s, and you will see firsthand, out of their mouths, what this did to them. And that's a good example. And they're actually success stories, although they are still struggling. Our facility here in Clackamas County is the Children's Center. It's a medical facility that intervenes and provides education and prevention. I believe there's nothing more fundamental the government can do. So it's, this is ours, and I encourage you to support it and to put it in that place in your mind. I know you do personally, but I think there's more we can do. Tom and I are going to come talk to you about this personally as well, but we've always appreciated your support. But this is an issue that's very dear to my heart, and I thank you for letting me come and talk to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we'll have Lieutenant Mike Copenhaver from Family Justice Center, Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and happy birthday, Chair Fisher. My name's Mike Copenhaver, and I'm a lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office, a newly-appointed Director of A Safe Place Family Justice Center, and I'm here to...
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Roberts today. It was his first gift of my new appointment. Thank you for taking time today to recognize the issue of child abuse in our county. I know that this is an issue you're deeply committed to, as is the sheriff and the members of his office. Our commitment to ending child abuse is evidenced by our hosting of the 20th Annual Child Abuse and Family Violence Summit later this month. This is a nationally renowned conference with about 1,000 attendees from all over the country. In its 20-year existence, we have trained nearly 15,000 individuals from all over the world, including China, Australia, and the Philippines. The conference is bringing subject matter experts from all corners of the country to speak about topics such as child maltreatment, cyber stalking, child suicide, and the power and science of hope, as well as many other topics. Another program that shows our commitment is our involvement with Camp Hope. The Sheriff's Office is proud and active partners with Clackamas Women's Services, and we are honored to provide support to this year-round program. This camp is designed to help children heal from trauma and have the fun, playful experience that they deserve. Camp Hope creates pathways to hope by restoring a sense of safety through supporting children and setting and attaining goals and helping them to believe in themselves. This summer, Camp Hope will be hosting 74 kids here in Clackamas County for this life-changing experience. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to join you in your support of ending child abuse here in Clackamas County.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, I think, John and Tom for being here because I remember when we first started the Children's Center, one of the issues we had that nobody wanted to talk about the issue, and that how do you frame something like serious child abuse and sexual abuse and beatings and being, you know, really in closets, the kinds of things that people will do to children, you know, burning them, all kinds of things that we can hardly imagine. How do you go out to a community and actually talk about those kinds of things even in order to get the community engaged? And it was a hard, it was a hard thing to face, and I want to thank both of you for continuing to face that in this county. Like I said, I remember, I remember the early days in the old building, and now you've got a great opportunity and a great facility. Because one of the things I remember we faced was that children were being pretty much traumatized, taken, but actually moved all the way to, I think, northeast Portland, was it? Yeah. So really, what we wanted to do was localize. And my understanding now that CARES, that took care of this, we are now pulling in some of those folks to work with the Children's Center because we've become the gold standard, actually probably the platinum standard, I think, in the state and I think around the nation. So thanks for your help with that.
Thank you. You've been in it from the beginning.
Thank you. Commissioner Humberston?
I just want to say thank you to the staff that actually do this work. It takes a special kind of person to be able to do it and do it fairly and objectively. I can tell you, when I was a probation officer, it was the one class of criminal behavior that I simply could not deal with objectively and made it clear that it was a class not to be assigned to my caseload. My solution is not legal, so I'll put it that way. So to have people that can actually handle this effectively and objectively and honestly, we're very lucky to have you, and I want to thank you for the work that you do because it's not work I could have done.
Thank you. Rod?
Before I read the proclamation, I would like to just bring your attention to, there's a series of events that are happening this month. You can find those events on clackamisparenting.com. That's clackamisparenting.com. And it'll look something like this on the website, but there's multiple events that are happening throughout the community to either honor, celebrate, or educate the population. So with that, I'll read the proclamation. So proclaiming April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clackamas County. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility that depends on involvement from people throughout the community. And whereas, according to 2017 Child Welfare Data Book in Oregon, there were 11,077 child victims of abuse or neglect in 2017. And whereas there were 511 child victims of abuse and neglect in Clackamas County in 2017, many children suffer more than one type of abuse. And whereas the child abuse rate in Clackamas County has been declining over the past three years, we must continue in our efforts to reduce the incidence of child abuse. And whereas whether suffering neglect, harsh physical punishment, threat of harm, sexual abuse, or psychological trauma, the children who survive carry the scars of their abuse for the rest of their lives. And whereas research shows child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of future risky behaviors such as criminal activities, substance abuse, academic failure, and health problems such as heart disease and obesity. And whereas we know child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. The majority of children abuse cases stemmed from situations and conditions that can be preventable when community programs and systems are engaged and supportive. A community that cares about early childhood development, parental support, and maternal mental health is more likely to foster nurturing families and healthy children. And whereas, we would also like to recognize the effective child abuse prevention programs in our community that have partnered together to create a continuum of services that support the county's goal of ensuring safe, healthy, and secure communities. Successful programs and initiatives in Clackamas County include local offices of Oregon Department of Human Services, that's Child Protective Services, Clackamas County Early Learning Hub, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, Child Abuse and Family Violence Summit, Children of Incarcerated Parents Committee, Children's Relief Nursery, Life Works Northwest, Health Families of Clackamas County, Children's Center of Clackamas County, Clackamas Parenting Together and Parent Education Hub, Court Appointed Special Advocates, Clackamas County Multidisciplinary Team, which includes the Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, Oregon Department of Human Services, and other, and other county agencies. So now therefore, the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we call upon all Clackamas County citizens to observe this month and every day by demonstrating our gratitude to those who work to keep our children safe and by taking personal action in each of our own communities to make them healthy places where children can grow and thrive dated this fourth day of April 2019. Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Rod. Was it Monday that we did the Circle of Honor?
Yes.
And if folks look outside in the center between our two buildings, there are 511 pinwheels representing each child in Clackamas County. It was, it's wonderful to recognize, but it's sobering. I really would like us to see, to not have any pinwheels around. But as long as we have children that are abused, we will continue to recognize them to keep our eyes focused on the very important collaborations and resources that we must dedicate because our most precious resource is our children. So with that, I would entertain a motion to proclaim April Child Abuse Prevention Month. I move we proclaim April Child Abuse Prevention Month.
And I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. And proclamation happens. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. You are a very supportive board. You've always been very supportive, and without you, none of this work would happen. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Rod. You've been the best to work with.
All right. Next on our agenda is the Grange presentation.
I believe you can...
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. I would like to introduce Don Kingsborough and Ed Luttrell. If they'd come up to the chairs, please introduce yourselves and speak on behalf of our Granges.
Chair Fisher and Commissioners, it is a pleasure to be here on your birthday and to be representing the Grange. I'm Ed Luttrell. I'm the Clackamas County Pomona Grange Master or President.
You want to introduce yourself, then I'll go from there.
Who are you?
I'm not sure, Sonya. Chair Fisher and Commissioners, my name is Don Kingsborough. I have multiple Grange hats. Today, I am representing District Four of the Oregon State Grange Legislative Committee.
Welcome.
So the, the Grange has been around since December 4th of 1867. So we are, we have celebrated as an organization over 150 years. And the unique thing about the Grange is that it was aimed at the rural population in that time period. And it had purposes. Those purposes were first and most importantly, education. We firmly believe and retain that belief to this present day, that everybody needs to work throughout their life to reach their full potential, and that includes formal education and informal education. People have been come leaders in government and in business through the opportunities of leadership training offered through the Grange on a monthly basis. The second aspect was social networking, bringing people together. Today, we look at Facebook and Twitter and all these other platforms, and they are missing what the Grange knew from the very beginning was essential. People coming together, sitting down over a cup of coffee and discussing the issues of the day and trying to understand each other. Once the Grange was formed, on those bases, we then added three others. First, the material benefits to our members. And through those efforts to benefit the American farmer, co-ops were introduced, mutual insurance companies were formed, and many other credit unions, et cetera. It was just an amazing outpouring of benefit to the very communities that those Grangers were in. Next was legislative involvement. The Grange is very proud that from the very beginning, and we have always been nonpartisan, we don't care which party is in charge, we don't care who you're running for or against. What we care about are the issues. And in Oregon, we are very proud of the fact that one of the reasons that we don't have a sales tax is the Oregon State, the Oregon State Grange had the simple philosophy that taxation was based upon the ability to pay, not the need to consume. And on that simple basis, the Grange led the fight against the sales tax. Many other things like the initiative petition process are the result of Grange members coming together in our state and making our state a better place to live. And lastly, community service. Community service was when you bring people together and you empower them, educate them, they see needs in their community, and they fill those needs. So the Grange has a long and proud history. Clackamas County is a unique place in Grange history, having been the location of the first two Granges formed in the state of Oregon. And we are very proud to work with the County Commission and at our level in Clackamas County. And we are very proud to say we even have members who sit on the council and have sat there before in the years past. And thank you for giving us this opportunity today.
Thank you.
Don?
I promise not to go that long. At the last meeting, I learned that I speak too long and too much. So this time, instead of me announcing what's been done and what's going to be done in the future, I've put a piece of paper in each one of your bulletins. And one of those papers will tell you what's going to happen, and one of those papers will tell you what has happened. What I would like to say to you this morning legislatively, there's a Senate bill at the Oregon Legislature that we believe would be very, very harmful to Oregon Grangers, or Oregon Granges, excuse me. Senate Bill 210, which I believe is aimed at getting rid of some falsely claiming charities, could possibly do great harm to Granges. The reporting functions of Senate Bill 210 don't have any appeals, and in fact, if a secretary at a local Grange would make a mistake on that form, then the county assessor can go back five years and collect taxes. For many of our Granges, that would be $15,000 or more with no, no chance of appeal written into the bill. So on behalf of the Oregon State Grange Legislative Committee, I am asking that if you agree with me, if you see fit, please ask who you know in Salem to vote against Senate Bill 210, should it come to the floor. On a better subject, House Bill 2444 is probably going to pass. We're very proud that if it does pass, it's going to pass significant funds into the FFA program of Oregon high schools all across our state. Thank you very, very much. It was difficult to follow that presentation ahead of us. I don't have any personal experience, but I have a lot of sympathy for those children. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right.
And happy birthday, Sonya.
Thank you. Commissioner Humberston, I believe you have something to read?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I do, I think it's rather fitting to note that this is both Child Abuse Prevention Month as well as Grange Month, and the values of the Grange, as I have come to understand them, suggest to me that it's very fitting that these, that these two things are together on this month. So, thank you for being here.
Brother Ken, I'm sure you know this, but for everybody else that's listening, what we ask for in Grange, in our membership, is that you see good in your fellow bean. That's the only requirement. There's no, there's no, well, there is an age requirement, thirteen and a half, but you know, there's, there's nothing else. We just want people to see good in their fellow bean. And if you do, you're welcome at the Grange.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Proclaiming April 2019 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. Whereas, since 1867, the Grange has been a grassroots movement for the benefit of American families and local communities. And whereas, Grange programs are family oriented, beginning with junior Grange for childrens of ages four through 13, for the purpose of getting children involved with their community, with agriculture, and with good citizenship. And whereas, Grange activities support personal development, leadership seminars, and foster a wide range of useful skills and abilities for personal growth through social, cultural, and educational programs. And whereas, Grange members attend public meetings, inform themselves of local, state, and national issues, and speak on behalf of those working in agriculture, producing food, fuel, and fiber. And whereas, members of the 16 active Granges in Clackamas County ignite a passion in the community for service and involvement, and outcomes of Grange advocacy are felt by nearly every citizen in Clackamas County today. Now therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Grange Month in Clackamas County. We urge the citizens of the county to recognize and participate in Grange activities and support Clackamas County Granges dated this fourth day of April 2019 by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Humberston. I would love to entertain a motion proclaiming April Grange Month.
Madam Chair, and I move we proclaim April as Grange Month in Clackamas County.
All those, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. If no further comments on Grange Month, I just want to say, I have so enjoyed our Granges. And Don, those cookies, we have a date every fair to go, and except I cheat and eat a few too many, I know, but it is such a wonderful time, not only eating the cookies, but serving them to our members of the community that come to gather to, to share. So, that's quite a blessing.
We're going to have to get her to the next pie auction. I'm going to get some money out of her pocket.
Yeah, just let us know. And you're good about letting us know, too. Thank you, Commissioner Humberston.
I will do that.
So, thank you very much. All right. With that, what is next on our agenda? Is that Citizen Communication?
Yes, it is.
I believe. Thank you, Comish, okay. I have blue cards. I know that Les Poole is on there, and Brainard is on the list. Why don't you come on up? Good morning. Good morning, Les. I missed you the last couple meetings. I don't know if you got my email that said, "Les, is everything okay?"
I did.
At one point, we didn't have anybody signed up for Citizen Communication, and then fortunately, some folks came in to sign up.
Somebody bailed me out.
Yes. But, go ahead. Tell us who you are, and take it away.
Good morning, Chair Fisher and Commissioners. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone, and I come a lot, as you know. And sometimes, when you show up here and you're going to talk about things, as Commissioner Humberston indicated, you, you see, you see a bigger world. If you want to see a bigger world, come to a Clackamas County Commission meeting. On that note, it's budget season, and there's a small budget line item somewhere deep in the budget that I'm here to request gets funded, and that's evening meetings, so that more people can participate. Right now, there's a big push for having the juveniles vote at 16. I don't believe they're ready. I believe we'll soon be seeing the governor offering 14-year-old registration. When I look at the condition of our society and some of the things that, that we hear about, some of the things that cause concern, one of the biggest concerns is that we've got children, I'm not talking about adults, we've got children that are at risk. And one of the biggest risks is coming from some of the things that are going on in Salem. It's, it's not good down there, is it Martha? You, you've worked there. Commissioner Schrader, I know her well enough, I call her Martha, and that's not an insult.
That's fine.
Thank you. I'm really, really concerned, and I'm hearing a lot. And intertwined with all of this, of course, is, is the transportation issue, which in ways is being mishandled. And here in today's newspaper is a article in the Oregonian about resurrecting the CRC as a replacement project. Part of the motivation for this suddenly, I'll call it popping up in Salem, is that if we don't have anything approved after all these years, I believe it's 10, but, but year after year after year, if there's no progress, if we're not continuing to fund this thing, this monster, then it dies, and we start all over. Well, that probably should have happened a few years ago, because it, it really did die. But it's being resurrected, and one of the reasons is that after all this time and hundreds of millions of dollars wasted that could have gone elsewhere, should have gone elsewhere, has brought no return. So, we're going to owe the federal government upwards of a couple hundred million. So, you bet the governor is on board with keeping this baby going. The same governor that fired the Secretary of State's staff. The day, I mean literally, and I say "the" governor, okay? I realize Kate Brown didn't fire the Secretary of State's staff. Kate Brown appointed someone to replace noble Dennis Richardson with someone who would get rid of the folks that were doing the auditing. It's extremely troubling about what's happening. And I come to you not as Les Poole, I come to you as a really concerned citizen, really concerned.
Thank you, Les.
And if I had more time, we could start talking about what we're going to do next about our transportation problems, because everything going on in Salem is trickling right down into this county.
Definitely that connection between federal, state, and local. Really appreciate your comments. Thank you.
And I wish I had better news about the Secretary of State and some of the things our governor is doing.
Brainard, good morning.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. Always thanks for allowing someone to come and fill out a blue card and participate. And yeah, I share your, I think more people should come, so I'd encourage that. I also would say, I'm also a very strong supporter of the Grange. And the thing that impresses me the most about the Grange in today's society, where we split ourselves apart and don't talk, is that they're nonpartisan. It's a place that people can come and theoretically put aside whatever party they're in and whatever they listen to in the news, and just talk about local issues. So, I hope more people do take advantage of that. And that's probably the core, in my opinion, the core place the Grange can strengthen itself and use that fundamental uniqueness. But I come to you today in part to thank for the continued work on road safety. We have something in the budget for radar feedback, but it's not the only topic. I've listed a lot of topics, and I stumbled on one. And yesterday, I actually went and did some measurements, and it relates to, if you come up to an intersection, you stop, there's a white line. And that white line says, "Hey, stop here, and look at your directions, and then continue." That would be the law. Well, where is that white line placed? So, I, I noticed inconsistencies, so I went from Ridge Road back to Ferguson, traveling west on Redland Road. And I found that the first number of intersections, and I went, tried to cover all the ones that had lines, were about seven feet. That was Ridge Road, Lyons Road, Pauline, Hinkle, Sprague Road. You get to Henry, see, it goes up to nine and a half feet. Then you go to Fisher's Mill, it's 13 and a half feet. I mean, almost double what it is previously. Then you go Norman at seven feet, maybe it's older. Cantor, 13. Fieldstone, 14 and a half. Marklin, 15 and a half. And you got one Potter Road at seven and a half. Then you go Bradley, 11 and a half, and Ferguson, 12. Partly popped up because I was noticing, you know, it came out last week about Ferguson. So, bottom line is, I'm wanting to point this out to you. It shocked me. I, I kind of observed it, but more or less stumbled on it by accident, and asking if we could look into it. It seems seemingly simple to resolve, but I have no idea what the guidelines are. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick question. Have you submitted this to Transportation Department?
Not yet, no.
Okay. I'll see to it that they get it.
I literally, yesterday afternoon, when I did, finally did the measurements and put it together.
Could I just?
Thank you very much.
Jump in real quick. I've got a lot of experience with this, and I've been to this exercise already. Typically, there's, if you look at the, at the edge of, of what is the pavement, whether it's a country road or not, as a rule, there's six feet for a sidewalk or for walking, and typically, you're going to stop the cars before you get there. It doesn't address everything, but you see that we're going from basically seven feet to, to pretty...
Oh, 15 and a half at Marklin, so.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you much.
Appreciate it. Okay, Katie Farrell is next on deck.
Is that on? Good morning. I think you guys got a little handout from me.
Please state your name.
My name's Katie Farrell. I'm with Oregon River Safety and Preservation Alliance. We're a nonprofit who, we spoke with you, I don't know, several months ago about two House bills, House Bill 2351, 2352, and I wanted to thank you for your support. We currently have both bills moved out of the Natural Resources Committee. House Bill 2351, which is a policy gap between the Oregon State Marine Board and pretty much the rest of the state, is now on the House floor. And 2352, an endorsement, voting endorsement piece, is currently going to the Ways and Means Committee. So, but I'm actually not here to talk about that today. I'm talking today about another arm of our nonprofit that we're working on. We, our issue evolves around high wave energy on the Willamette River. And because of this, the embankments have pretty much eroded, and homeowners are having to restore them. They're not wanting to restore them actually until the wave energy issue is resolved, however. So, we're hoping that the House bills will help us resolve those. But in the meantime, we're trying to create a platform, a uniform platform, for all property owners along the river, that they can restore their embankments in a habitat-friendly way. Right now, we have experiences where property owners, number one, they're confused about what to do, and number two, it's very cost prohibitive to restore your embankment. So, we have been working with Department of State Lands, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, City of Wilsonville, and also hoping Clackamas County will help us out a little bit. DSL, Army Corps of Engineers, they're not going to charge us a permitting fee to put this platforming together for landowners. And from our research, Clackamas County has a program with ODFW, and it's in your handout, the actual ZDO, Section CO3.07. I, I'm not really familiar with all this stuff, but right now, Clackamas County charges $960 per person for the floodplain development permits. And what we, we see is these permits are a disincentive for property owners to restore their property correctly, or what we think is correctly habitat-friendly. And what they do is they then go without getting permits, and then they place rip rap. Can I keep going for about 30 more seconds?
Sure.
Just to let you know that placing rip rap does not help the environment at all. Willamette River is essential salmon habitat, and it actually is destructive to the salmon. And so, our ask is basically, could the commission talk about waiving the permitting fee while we put together this platform for landowners to then restore the property that they would like to restore in a habitat-friendly manner?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Katie, because you've been keeping us up to date with this. And I just have a recent email from you giving us the, you know, the, where we are with 2351 and 2352. And colleagues, this is an issue upriver as well as downriver, and it's been going on for a while. And I know that Representative Kennimer, Kennimer actually has been a champion of this, because he has a, you know, land on the lake, excuse me, not on the lake, but on the river. I have land close to the lake, but anyway. So, my question to you is, it seems that it's qualitatively different, like floodplain development, development permits versus actual restoration activities, because to me, they would be more than likely different things. So, that would be my first observation here. I don't know about the fish enhancement permit, which involves other state agencies. Do the other state agencies charge a fee, or is it only Clackamas County that charges a fee?
Right now, it's only Clackamas County that's charging a fee. DSL, DEQ, City of Wilsonville, they're not charging any fees. They're helping us so that we can get property owners to restore in a habitat-friendly environment. Again, Clackamas County has worked with ODFW on tributaries for farmers and landowners that they have a tax write-off, basically incentivizing them to restore their embankments.
Well, I think what I'm going to suggest, colleagues, that, you know, obviously, we can't make a decision today. But this would be a conversation with permitting, with, with our land use folks, with Jennifer Hughes, and kind of looking at our codes and looking at our, our ZDOs. So, perhaps that's something we might do at a work session, I think, in the future, at least, let's at least get an idea of why we charge fees. At this point in time, the, we generally have had a policy where, and this is years ago, and it's not codified or written anywhere, we want 80% recovery from, for staff work. And there are some now, because of the budget, you know, issues we're going to be facing, that it could be as high, we may be actually, actually asking for 100% of cost recovery. So, whether or not that's part of this, I can't answer that at this point. And it doesn't mean that we certainly can't look at it as a group, as commissioners. I can't speak for the commission as a whole, but I know, but I'm pretty sure my colleagues would agree it's something we should probably take a look at. And perhaps we can even talk about what it would take to waive the fee in terms of what would be ecologically sound, to really make it qualitatively different from development versus restoration, because to me, those are two different things. So, I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but I'd like to maybe talk to our administrator and see if we can look at this a little further.
Yeah, I think that's good. I see that Laurel is busy taking notes, and I'm sure that she will follow through with that, because it is important. Thank you so much, Katie.
Thank you. Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you. So, I believe we have a series of public hearings happening next, and I believe Nate Boderman, you can...
Yes, I'd like to invite Nate Boderman and Ken Martin up. Ken Martin is our boundary change consultant. Nate's staying there. But we have Stephen here from County Council. And we have four boundary change actions hearings, and I'll let Ken go ahead and run.
Great. And before we start, Commissioner Humberston has a question.
In some cases, when we have multiple hearings like this, we're able to take a single vote on all of them at one time. Is this one of those situations, or are we going to have to take each one individually as far as the vote is concerned?
Individual.
Individually? Okay, thank you.
They're different districts.
All right. Take it away.
All right, take it away.
The first proposal is an annexation to the Tri-City Service District. This is the county service district that provides more or less wholesale services to the cities of Oregon City, West Lynn, and Gladstone. And whenever we have an annexation to one of those cities, we have to have an annexation to the district as a separate activity, and that's what is occurring in this case. This is a piece of property that is a, it's a single piece of property. It has three dwellings on it. Actually, only one of the dwellings is going to connect to the sewer right away. It has a failing septic tank. And this is now inside the city of Oregon City. There are service there. In fact, I think the service has already been run on an emergency basis, so we'd recommend approval.
Thank you very much. And we have to wait for Commissioner Schrader to return, I believe.
Yes.
We can open the public hearing.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing. All right. And I will close the public hearing. And we will take a quick little recess until Commissioner Schrader returns. All right, let's go.
All right. I know the audience is waiting with bated breath for us to return to our agenda. So, after that compelling presentation of the boundary change, I will now entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move approval of the board order for boundary change proposals, CL seventeen dash zero-one-eight.
Second.
Excellent. It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to our second item.
Just a correction for the record.
Oh, yes.
Zero-one-five is the first boundary change. Zero-one-eight hasn't been heard yet. That will be the second one.
Order I, I had it in.
That's why you are here, to keep us on track. Commissioner Humberson, how could you make such a mistake?
Because it's out of order in the book.
Oh, is that right? Well, we will move on to, shall we do it again, entertain a motion for CL...
I'll go with the script instead of my book. So, I've moved to approve the board order for boundary change proposals, CL seventeen dash zero-one-five, annexation to Tri-City Service District.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and motion carries. All right. And now, we may move on to the next boundary, which is CL one-seven dash zero-one-eight, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
This is the Sunrise Water Authority. This is the district that provides water service in the North Clackamas County area, both inside the city of Happy Valley and outside. This particular property is not inside the city of Happy Valley, so it's a property that's going to be developed under county regulations. There's a proposal for an eighteen-lot subdivision. The district has water to the area and can serve it, and we'd recommend approval.
Excellent. With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak? All right, don't all come up here and rush here at once. With that, I will close the public hearing. And any discussion, or would anyone entertain, care to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposals, CL seventeen dash zero-one-eight, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Excellent. Motion passes. Right, we will move on to the next.
This is a boundary change to Clackamas County Service District Number One. That's your service district for sewers. It does serve both inside and outside the city of Happy Valley. This particular piece is within the city of Happy Valley. It's being proposed for annexation to provide for development, eventual development on this property. The district has services available, and we'd recommend approval.
Great. With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion on this matter? Great, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposals, CL eighteen dash zero-one-three, Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Excellent. Motion approved. And our next, CL one-eight dash zero-one-four, Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Actually, this is Clackamas River Water.
Okay.
The last...
Zero-one, zero-one-four?
Zero-one-four. Clackamas River Water.
We have it as annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
That's my fault. I'll fix it. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you.
This, this, Clackamas Water District serves both in the rural and the urban area. This happens to be way out in the rural area. And this is a proposal to serve a nursery, which would like a better source of water than it currently has, and to serve the one house that they have on the property. There's water there, and we'd recommend approval.
I will open the public hearing on this matter. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposals, CL one-eight dash zero-one-four, Clackamas River Water.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Aye?
Aye.
All right, it's, excellent. It has motion carries. All right. And so, we are done with the public hearings and the boundary changes. And next, I believe Nancy Bush is here to talk about disaster management.
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I'm Nancy Bush. I'm the Director of Disaster Management here in Clackamas County. And we are here to get approval for our natural hazard mitigation plan. We are required to update our natural hazard mitigation plan every five years. And I always like to brag on us because we were actually the first county in the country to have a natural hazard mitigation plan. So, we have continued that, and we continue to make that bar just a little bit higher as we always move forward. Just to do an overview of some of the changes and some of the bigger changes that we had this year. The, we included in the plan a new way of looking at our hazards and what our natural hazards are. Through that process, we have moved drought and wildland fires and have given them an elevated status on that particular list. As all of you know, wildland fire in particular, that season gets longer and longer and starts earlier and earlier. We also updated our earthquake data. We have, there's new science out now, so we were able to do a lot of different types of maps that include shaking for Cascadia, for example. So, we've included that in here as well and through, and talked about that mitigation issues, excuse me. And then also through the flood in Clackamas County. Flood is the most likely event to happen here. And again, we have some new data and new science that we were able to look at and reference there as well, primarily some of the erosion studies that were done on the Upper Sandy River. So, we do have a resolution today, but before I read that, I ask if there are any questions.
Yes, I believe Commissioner Humberson has a question or a comment.
Yeah, comment. By the way, I agreed with your assessment that fire and flood are probably the two most likely circumstances that we're going to be facing, even though we all know the Cascadia event's a whole other ballgame. But the things that we know we're going to probably face inevitably on a regular basis are fire and flooding. So, I thought your assessment was right on the money. Funny thing about reading this thing, I'm going through it, and initially, I'm thinking in terms of what do we do to, to respond to the disaster? And then I stopped about six pages, and I realized, no, this is the mitigation plan. This is not the response plan.
Exactly.
But your, your assessment on where the, where the real risks are, I appreciate. I think you were right on the money.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is the, it's an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure plan, correct?
Yes, it is, exactly.
Commissioner Schrader?
No comments? Okay.
I think it's great. I remember serving on UASI for a while. I think Commissioner Bernard does that now.
Yes, he does do it now.
But I know that it's, it's a regional, it's a regional issue, and I really admire what you do because we have unique, we have unique topography here that also really pushes us to really think differently about how we mitigate hazards.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Schrader. It, we, it's really interesting. We're very closely packed in here in the metro area, but when you look at every county, we are very unique in what our hazards are.
Well, we've got a volcano and rivers and floods, so that's...
We do have a volcano.
Yeah, that's why we, we love Clackamas County. We love all of the diversity that it offers, but we definitely have to plan for it. So, we really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And with that, I believe you have something to read?
Yes, the resolution. Whereas Clackamas County recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people, property, and infrastructure within our community, and whereas undertaking hazard mitigation acts, actions will reduce the potential for harm to people, property, and infrastructure from future hazard occurrences, and whereas an adopted natural hazards mitigation plan is required as a condition for future funding for mitigation projects under multiple FEMA pre and post-disaster mitigation grant programs, and whereas Clackamas County fully participated in the FEMA-prescribed mitigation planning process to prepare this natural hazards mitigation plan, and whereas the Oregon Office of Emergency Management and Federal Emergency Management Agency Region Ten officials have reviewed the Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and pre-approved it dated January twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, contingent upon this official adoption of the participating governments and entities, and whereas the natural, the NHMP is comprised of three volumes. Volume one, basic plan. Volume two, jurisdictional agenda, addenda. And volume three, appendices collectively referred to herein as the NHMP. And whereas the NHMP is in an ongoing cycle of development and revision to improve its effectiveness, and whereas Clackamas County adopts the NHMP and directs the resilience coordinator to develop, approve, and implement the mitigation strategies and any administrative changes to the NHMP. Now, therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners resolves as follows. Number one, that Clackamas County adopts the, adopts the Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigations Plan as an official plan. And two, that Clackamas County will submit this adopted, adoption resolution to the Oregon Office of Emergency Management and Federal Emergency Management Agency Region Ten officials to enable final approval, excuse me, of the Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigations Plan dated this fourth day of April, twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Any discussion?
Just one comment, Madam Chair, and that is, is that if you see the U.S. Geological Service trucks running around and telling you that the mountain is about to blow, my strong suggestion is get in your car and go on vacation. Do not hang around.
Yes, and do it really, really fast.
This is not a place to be if the volcano goes.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that is, that is a good suggestion. I remember Mount St. Helens. I was in eighth grade, and I was actually on a school trip and came home from the school trip, and we were on a science, actually geological study trip away from Mount St. Helens. And I came back and there was ash everywhere. And so, that was quite the dramatic event. You do not stick around when that is in the air.
Do not stick around, no.
Yeah, so with that, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt the updates to the twenty-nineteen Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This carries. Thank you so much, Nancy, for all of your work and your commitment to this very important issue.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we are now moving on to the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services Authorization to Sign Grant Award Documents from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty Continuum of Care Program. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Toowallatin Regarding a Transfer of a Portion of Borland Road. Approval of a Contract with D&amp;D Concrete and Utilities for the Tor Bank River Road Trolley Trail Sidewalk Project. Under Elected Officials, Approval of a Personal Services Contract Amendment Number One with the U.S., with U.S. Bank to Provide Banking Services, and this was submitted by the County Treasurer. Request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Department of Human Services for Funding to Conduct a Child Abuse and Family Violence Training. Under Technology Services, Approval of a Service Level Agreement with Oregon City School District for the Lease of Dark Fiber. And our Development Agency, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement for Right-of-Way Services with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the CRC Mobility Improvement Project. Execution of a Property Line Adjustment Deed with Pat Murphy and Dylan Murphy to Adjust Approximately zero-point-one-four-five acres on property located on Capes Road west of southeast one-hundred-and-twentieth Avenue. Execution of a Property Line Adjustment Deed with Pat Murphy and Dylan Murphy to Adjust Approximately zero-point-zero-one-four acres on property located on Capes Road west of southeast one-hundred-and-twentieth Avenue. And Acceptance of a Quick Claim Deed with Pat Murphy and Dylan Murphy Related to Property Located on Capes Road west of southeast one-hundred-and-twentieth Avenue. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Excellent job reading all of that with such a nice cadence. You do such a good job.
Thank you.
Making it also clear for us. So, does, do any commissioners have, want to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? If not, I will ask for motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Excellent. Consent agenda is on its way. And next, we have the county administrator update.
Yes, I have a couple of things today, actually, a number of things that are really wonderful for your birthday. So, thank you. First, you may know that, I think you do know that the deadline for individuals to file as special district board candidates was last Thursday. I know that Commissioner Savas spent some time promoting the deadline on social media, and we thank him for that. Every year, the county hopes to attract candidates for as many open positions as possible for these special districts. This year, two-hundred-and-twenty candidates filed for one-hundred-and-eighty-six races, resulting in only thirty-three races with no candidates filed. To explain the lack of candidates with some races, it can be very challenging to attract board candidates for some of the very small water districts, for example. And Clackamas County has sixteen of those small water districts, which tend to be in rural areas. My understanding is that our elections officials are very happy with these numbers, so great job to them. Next, I wanted to pass along that one county employee, Tourism's Jared Lyman, is participating in the Leukemia and Lymphomia, sorry, Lymphoma Society Man of the Year Campaign. He attracted some local press coverage for his cause, and his goal is to raise one million dollars locally to help find cures for blood cancer. While this is a personal effort on his part, the news coverage did label him as a county official, and it is a great association that I think is emblematic of the kind of people that we employ here at Clackamas County. I wish Jared the best of luck in his altruistic and touching pursuit. And also, we want to give special acknowledgement to the staff in our Department of Transportation and Development, who helped a local and longtime Estacada family recently. This family's four fathers originally settled in Estacada area after coming over on the Oregon Trail. After the farmhouse was originally built, it became an integral part of the family for generations. In recent years, the family made the decision to demolish the home, have septic work done, perform soil testing, and many other upgrades. Included in the upgrade was getting a new home on the property. Earlier this week, an email from one of the family members to staff in DTD thanked the county for the work it did in moving the project forward. The email also detailed that because of the work county staff performed, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren in this family can continue the legacy of living in the farm home and working on the property. In part, the email said, quote, "We can finally, after two years, see a clear trail before us," end quote. So, thank you to the fantastic customer service performed by the staff in DTD. And finally, last month, we told you that our Juvenile Director, Christina McMahon, was having an upcoming article published in a nationally peer-reviewed journal, and I'm happy to relay that that article is now out. This month's edition of Juvenile and Family Court Journal features Christina's article titled "Juvenile Justice in Oregon: Balanced and Restorative Justice in Action." The article has a very heavy emphasis on Clackamas County relating that we are the state's leader when it comes to balanced restorative justice. So, my congratulations to Christina today.
Yay. Can we get a link for that article? I would love to read it. Thank you so much. All right. With that, we will move on to Commissioner Communication, and I believe Commissioner Schrader, it is your, you're up.
Yeah, well, I tried to keep it brief last week, so this week, I'll probably go a little longer. Oh, well.
Oh, here we go.
And thank you for allowing me to leave the room for a moment. I did not do that lightly. I did need to, did need to go to the restroom, so sorry about that.
That happens.
That happens. There we go. Anyhow, let me start with my meeting with President Tim Cook of Clackamas Community College. I had a meeting with him yesterday. We toured the manufacturing center, the new manufacturing center that was built because of the bond that was passed, and it is absolutely fantastic. I talked to him about my visit to England, to Sheffield, where they have a... I talked to him about my visit to England, to Sheffield, where they have a model for manufacturing excellence that also combines proximity of some of the major businesses, Boeing, Rolls-Royce, basically container industries, composite industries, on the same campus with their actual manufacturing training. And I'm pleased to know that he has made those contacts with Senator Betsy Johnson, and I keep kind of in the loop with this, because not only do they have a manufacturing center that actually appears to be very similar to what they're doing in Sheffield, they also have land next door where they're looking to locate businesses, and you could have, there will be an opportunity for that co-campus location where young folks can actually get the training they need and walk over from where they're working to really even get updated. It's a beautiful facility, I would recommend that everyone get a chance to visit it. Please remember, manufacturing is not gone, it has changed tremendously. There's a lot of computer work, there's a lot of advanced skills that young folks need to have, and their facility is definitely going to meet the need that we have in our county and in the area. They're also partnering with Oregon Tech. Oregon Tech actually allows young people to go on to advanced degrees, and the other piece that they do is they have a really strong curriculum in research and development, which is also part of the English manufacturing model. And by the way, why do I keep talking about the one in England? Because they had an unemployment rate of 28%. And because of the location of this, and them really looking at workforce differently, it now hovers around 3% to 4%, which is a significant difference. It took a lot of innovation, but it also took extreme commitment on part of the business community who invested heavily in making sure that they had a prepared workforce. So, I'm also working with Bridget Daisy, who is our Workforce Executive Director, I'm the Workforce Commissioner, thanks to my colleagues, and basically, we're looking at working with all of our school districts. We're talking to JADA, our extension, you know, our Education Service District Director as the superintendents get together, what that training might look like if we drop it down into lower grades, what that might look like with after-school programs, what kind of transportation needs do we have as they want to start using the facility for actually attracting and doing activities and STEM activities with younger students. So, there's a lot going on with that, and I'm really enjoying every minute of it because it's been a long-term interest of mine. So, now I'm going to talk about something that's kind of fun, but I do want people to take it seriously, and that is pollination issues. Okay, why is pollination important? You know, bees, butterflies, hummingbirds, sometimes bats. I'm going to basically focus on the invertebrates here, also includes wasps and flies and things of that sort, and creatures of that sort, because that was my first love, was entomology. And why is it important? Because essentially, there's over 130 food crops that if we did not have these natural pollinators, we would not have food. And we have found out that one out of every three of our bites of food is due to, is due to the food shed because of pollinators who are actually out there doing the work. So, we're pulling a conversation together with the Xerces Society, they're an invertebrate, a group that concentrates on vertebrate conservation, our Soil, Water, and Conservation District, our extension group, our Oregon State University Research folks on bees at North Willemin Experiment Station, Oregon League of Conservation Voters, and what we're looking at is to get designated, we hope, as a pollination campus. And that's just a start. As you know, West Lynn is now a certified bee city, and we're hopeful that we can actually spread those ideas across the entire county. Again, I think it's important because it is about food sheds, it is about how we get our food, it's about how our food shed is maintained, and making sure that those things continue to happen. So, as much as I love bees, because I think they're wonderful creatures, remember, they have a very vital part in human nutrition and how we treat our environment. Other than that, I did want to thank the sheriff. I'm going to be the keynote speaker at the Family Violence Summit that's coming up, and I just want to thank him for giving me that opportunity to say a few words with my colleagues there as well about how this is so important for the rest of us throughout the county. So, with that, let me go to the word of the week, I think that's first, verbose?
That's correct. Perfect word today.
Yes, it is. Uh-huh. That would, that would, that would be me, okay. And I do know what it means, wordy. Did you know that which uses unnecessary language is verbose? I wouldn't say unnecessary, I'd say a lot of language, but anyway, there you go. The librarian was excited to learn the children using the new dictionary in the library, but cautioned them to not be verbose when giving school reports. So, keep it simple. All right, Arts and Community Culture Activities in the County. Mount Hood Art Online Presents Winter Art Show through April 14, 2019, Monday through Thursday, 11:30 to 8:00, Fridays and Saturdays, 11:30 to 9:00. Rendezvous Grill and Welch's. Come to the mountain for a beautiful afternoon and join the new full art collection. Organize my Mount Hood Art Online, have a glass of wine and a meal while you enjoy art by some of the Northwest's most talented artists. Malala Community K-8 Students Invited to Submit Art for Safe Routes to School Poster Contest. Submit hand-drawn art to school between April 1st and 30th. Malala Community Students are invited to submit their original artwork about the benefits of walking, biking, and using other powered ways to get to school. Students can enter to win prizes and have their artwork featured on posters, brochures, and more. For more information, clackamasartsalliance.org. Word about Lakewood Theater until the 7th, Taking Steps, a comedy by Alan Ackborn, will be still playing, so buy your tickets and get to that. And on April 13, Clackamas Repertory Theater at 6:30 is having their 2019 Annual Gala at the Osterman Theater at Clackamas Community College. So, plan to be there, it's a great event with lots of music and singing and good food and fun stuff to bid on for their auction. And I'm going to make a suggestion to Ken, you know, I do this every week for these two groups, why don't you take over the Grange in every week? Talk about the Grange activities, just list it out the way we do with this, that'd be a great idea.
I would love that.
That would be wonderful, because then we let everybody else know in the whole county. Yeah, and invite people to join, brother, your brother Ken, right? Okay, because you're a member. Because I, it's great to get the sheep, but let's, yeah, let's get it out there for you folks.
Don, you heard that, you're going to have to, you're going to have to start sending me the-
Commissioner Schrader has a way of giving me additional response.
Well, yeah, and I have a way.
But you will then shove to me, obviously.
Occasionally, I've been compared to Tom Sawyer, that's true, but anyway.
Commissioner, with the break in the routine here, you might be interested in maybe one of the classes, HB 305A, I think it is, and Centerville 853, are both bills that are being protected.
Pollinators, yeah. Thank you for that, yeah. Yeah, there's been a lot of activity in Salem. As much as we say sometimes they don't do things the way we'd like, this is some good stuff that they've been up to with that, and I've been, thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. So, this month of April, so we had a, there's Child Abuse Prevention Month, which we had a wonderful, oh, sorry, did you want to say something?
No. I think, I think I was up next.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
So sorry.
It's quite all right.
Oh, my goodness.
Usually, the chair-
Commissioner Humberston.
Just a couple of things this week. One is our CLT initiative is moving forward well. We have two companies that are indicating some real interest in locating in Clackamas County. One is a post-production facility that's looking in Estacada, and another one is a full production facility. So, on that second one, we're putting together some financial performance for the company, and fingers are crossed, these things do take a lot of time because you're talking about a lot of money being spent, and people are rightfully cautious about how they invest in these kinds of things. But it is looking good as we go forward, and that will mean some really nice family wage jobs for our citizens here in Clackamas County. So, I keep plugging away, and fingers crossed. On the note of our ISP project, the business plan should be coming forward within the next month. But related to that is two new school districts have signed on to our dark fiber. And prior to that, we were saving, the taxpayers, generally speaking, well over a million dollars a year by their ability to hook up to our dark fiber system. So, that will increase as a result of these school districts also hooking up. And the reason that I look at this as an important initiative is that Colton School District, some of you have heard this before, needed high-speed internet, and the company agreed that they would provide high-speed internet for $10,000 a month. I think that's absurd and obscene to charge a school district that kind of money for internet service. We're doing it for $255 a month. That saves the taxpayers a great deal of money, and that's been spread across over 270 different agencies and buildings in Clackamas County. So, I intend to continue to pursue this initiative. And finally, we're coming into budget season, and I know a lot of people don't understand the county budget process, those of us that sit up here work pretty hard to try and understand it ourselves. So, one of the things that I did this week, if I can find it, was put a, here we go, a post on the neighborhood app as well as on Facebook and several different pages on Facebook, and to about 300 people to get my regular weekly emails. But I just would like to read this briefly, and then I'll be done, other than the dog, of course. "I know many of you wonder about the budget for the county, where and how it is spent, and why sometimes things are funded, or not, the way they are. So, here is a basic description. The Board of County Commissioners is the board for eight total agencies. There are five citizen volunteers for each board that serve with the commissioners to review the budget each year, a process that takes several weeks of their volunteer time. Seven of the boards, like the Parks District, et cetera, have funds that can only be spent in their direct service. They cannot be moved by law to any other purpose. The county's general budget is the largest budget, also with five citizen volunteers. Seventy percent of that budget is restricted. That means that 70% cannot be used by law for anything other than the direct purpose for which the money is allocated. We cannot move it to any other use. The VRF is one of those things, as is the gas tax and state VRF. They must be used on roads. Property tax, one of the sources of revenue, cannot be used on roads. That, too, is prohibited by law. Another portion of the general fund comes from fees such as licenses, other kinds of fees, state revenue, and federal revenue. That also is specifically spent only on allowed services. Finally, 16% of all the funds the county receives are unrestricted. We can spend it according to the board's various priorities. However, 45% of that goes to the sheriff, and another 10% to the district attorney. The remainder supports the county assessor, the county clerk, human services, and a few other activities. I know many of you may wonder why we don't spend money on things that may directly affect your neighborhoods, as if we had a big pot of money to spend any way we wish. But as you can see, most is directly allocated by law to very specific uses. Frankly, that is probably a good idea. Imagine a board that simply spent any way it wished without these controls. You would likely see that the loudest and most immediate priorities would get responded to and others ignored for political purposes. Not a good way to run a railroad. Finally, I can tell you, we are always on the lookout for ways to be more efficient and responsive to public concerns. While certainly not perfect, here are two examples of those efforts. We eliminated 200 pages of unneeded rules and regulations, and we recently developed more efficient procurement rules. The last one will help us coordinate public works and private works projects. For instance, when a project is being constructed, get all the utilities done at that time and not have to come back six months later and cut up the road again. That will reduce costs and inconvenience to the public. I hope this helps you understand a bit more about how the county works, and if you ever want to know more, let me know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Humberston. Oh, and you also have the dog.
And I've got the dog today. This is Hoppy. He is a bouncy young man who is so excited about life, he's 19-months-old terrier mix who is looking for a great home. He really enjoys people and can't wait to meet you. He can be a bit pushy to get your attention. Any children in the home should be at least 13 years old. He can't wait to meet you, so come see him today. For more information about Hoppy or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I apologize for thinking that you went before.
Unnecessary.
How could I have thought that? It's, must be the increasing birthday excitement that continues to happen today. All right, we, I wanted to mention, we had the Child Abuse Prevention Month, which we have commemorated here, and we had the event on Monday. It's also another week, it's Public Health Week. And yesterday, there was a pretty wonderful event about reimagining health, rethinking and reimagining health. There was a collaboration of many community partners that came to the event yesterday, it was at Clackamas Community College. And I just wanted to share a few of the takeaways that really spoke to me while I was listening to the different ideas that were being discussed. We had wonderful presenters there, Serena Boston Ashby, who's with the Public, Oregon Public Health Institute, spoke, Christine Lewis, our new Metro Counselor. We also had Mayor Gamba, who spoke, and a gentleman from the business community who's a practicing attorney representing the Chamber of Commerce from Kansas City, Missouri. And out of all of these different perspectives and different things that were shared, some real takeaways for me, when Mayor Gamba said, he started off his comments with, "Oh, you know, I'm the mayor of Milwaukee, and I'm being asked to speak on public health. What, what do I do for public health?" And then, as he thought about all of the functions that local government does to assure the healthy life of their residents, it's overwhelming what we all do to promote public health. And it was wonderful hearing through his lens, all the simple things, even as much as making sure that there are walkways and pathways, and looking at how you construct buildings, and how you conserve energy, and how you were looking at to protect the planet, and what we do to, for sustainability, and all of the factors that we do as local governments. It was just very refreshing hearing that from his lens. Another speaker that really spoke to me was the gentleman from Kansas City, and he, just the night before he spoke, so if that was Wednesday, that was yesterday, then Tuesday, he had worked really hard with the business community in Kansas City to pass an early childhood initiative that would have raised $30 million to, for early childhood education. They focused a lot on when you invest in young children and you give them opportunities for education, you reduce costs so significantly in special education costs, in public assistance costs, but mostly in incarceration and correction costs, because when you educate children young, get them right when their brain is forming, you provide those early services, the savings is substantial. And so, as a business community in Missouri, they worked really, really hard to pass addition to a sales tax for that, and they failed. They did not succeed. And what he shared, I think, is a good lesson for all of us, and forgive me, Scott Hall, Vice President for Civic and Community Initiatives with the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce. If I don't have this quote exact, but it's, I tried to write it down as fast as I could, but he said, "If you're only in it to win, you won't take on objectives that are lofty enough to matter." So, I want to leave all of us with that perspective, because when we look at quality of life, protecting public health, looking at what is important for the residents that we serve, we have to think big, we have to look for what matters. When you look at children, you look at child abuse, preventing child abuse, you look at the opiate crisis, you look at our homelessness, you look at what Nancy Bush talked about with mitigating natural disasters, being prepared for natural disasters, with all of the services, with our land use planning, with our wastewater treatment, with our surface water, all of those things so affect the lives of our citizens. We have to think big, we have to create the vision, and it's wonderful to serve with colleagues that share that importance. And with that, we say hats off to not only Child Abuse Prevention Week, but also to Public Health Week as well.
Great.
Okay, and with that, if there's nothing else, I will say we are adjourned.
Okay, and happy birthday. Okay, and happy birthday.